Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Pia. I am calling today's public forum for the Stratford Town Council to order. Today is Monday, March 14th, 2022. It is 7:00 PM. For those of you, we have a few extra people here tonight, so for those of you who have not joined us for one of these, the way we do it is follows. There's a sign up sheet right at the podium. If you have not signed up, Ms. Paquette is going to be going to sign up now. Everyone is given three minutes to speak. We do have a large amount of people here, so I would ask that everyone keep in hold, and I will be holding everyone to that three-minute marker, of which an alarm will sound from the council clerk. So, I will be calling up names, as always, and per our council rules of procedure, which was approved by this body. People allowed to speak are Stratford taxpayers or residents, and we'll get going in a second. When you come up to the podium, if you could just announce your name and address for the record. First person I have signed up is Mr. Jack Russian. And if I pronounce your name wrong, sir, or anybody, please correct me.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have been a resident of Stratford all my life, and some things have been...
Do you have your address, too, sir?
I'm sorry, oh, 190 Edgewood Street. It's just come to my attention lately through social media, through talking with friends and other sources that... The concern is keeping Stratford beautiful, making sure that there's no destruction, and there's everything from the trees to the Center School to everything is just sort of kind of swirling around me. I just wanted to mention how wonderful I think this town is, and please, think twice about destroying any trees, land, think twice about developing condos and things like that, because that's only... To me, that's only greed. We have to get past that, and we have to make sure that we have some, a lot, of nature to pass along to our children, and who can appreciate that. So, that is all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Mr. Jim Simon.
Hi, I'm Jim Simon from 82 Meadowmere Road. I'm here to talk about the Longbrook Park, the tennis courts, and the trees, but also to urge you to consider this issue in tandem with another issue, the Center School developments. I have personal experience with both, the 1960s and 70s. I played a lot of tennis on those clay courts at Longbrook. Also played a lot of basketball at what we still call the new Center School, even though it's long gone at this point. There are different timetables for these two issues for the council, and I'm hoping the council could be flexible in considering them together. Stratford High certainly deserves the top-notch tennis courts, but the price of building them at Longbrook and losing the trees is just too high in my mind. Building the courts as Center School parking lot as part of a larger plan to use the land as a park has several advantages. It's the same distance, if not closer, to Stratford High School. It protects the mature trees at Longbrook. It avoids the high-density housing and traffic nightmare that neighbors around Center School dread, and again, it creates a welcomed park in the middle of town. I'm not surprised by the huge public reaction to the Longbrook trees. The first municipal issue I ever got involved in was in the 1990s, when the town wanted to take down dozens of trees in Whipperwill Lane, up in my district eight, to make room for a Duke energy pipeline. We met at Booth Memorial Park, we came to the council, we went to the Connecticut Post, and we were successful at scaling that way, 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 way back. And I hope we'll have the same successful outcome on this issue. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Edward Goodrich. Ed?
Edward Goodrich, 2191 Elm Street. Two issues I'd like to address the council. One is, of course, is first the trees, and I think that we really got to take into consideration that trees, and beautiful trees and big trees, make a town. It could make a... It makes it either look really, really nice, or it makes it look, you know, not so nice. So I want everybody to keep in that consideration of any way to save those trees up there or anywhere around town that would be a benefit for the town of Stratford. I think the town would look much better with nice, big trees. Number two, we'll talk about the Center School project. I know a little bit about it, because I know I was involved in that Stratford Center project, oh, probably almost 20 years ago when they had the flood. And I could tell you that it's a big deal. We're doing open-heart surgery in the heart of town, and I think it took us over a whole year to decide what we're going to do. We brought in the state of Connecticut, traffic studies, and this is a big deal. The project that we have there now, I mean, this could have a huge negative impact. I mean, you can't really get through town now at certain parts of the day. We really have to rethink this one and get a community effort in. But, you know, this is the colossus that's going to be there, there's 160-something apartments and I think 24, 5 stories and 300 apartment spaces. Think about what's in there, in that corner, and they got to come out into the street, and they got to... I think somebody showed me that the study says that it wasn't feasible because it was just too much traffic. So this is really something I think that we should really stop and don't do anything rash, because, you know, you will not be able to get through the center of town, I can tell you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Next on the list is State Representative Gresko. Joe?
Thank you, Joe Gresko, 284 Mary Avenue. Thank you to the council people that attended the Longbrook Park hearing and for listening to many of the people behind me and others that couldn't make it tonight, and I'm hoping that the council will, well, take this up again. I'm sure you'd get a motion to reconsider in a second going forward, and I'm hoping that we can redesign the tennis courts, the pickleball courts, and save the trees so that everybody is happy. And I'm going to keep it to under a minute, so there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next signed up, I have a Peter, and forgive me, sir, I can't pronounce, I can't make out your last name.
Pronounce it like Bo.
Bo, I just couldn't read the writing. I apologize. For the record, please.
Okay, thanks. So, I just want to comment, as Ed alluded to about...
Peter, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Oh, yes, sorry. Peter Bo, 1705 Elm Street. As Ed alluded to, I've driven through town, and people block the intersection. It's backed up all the way to St. James at certain times of the day, and the last thing we need is to have a higher-dense housing put into that area. My heart goes out to the people that live across, used to live across, from Center School, because now they're facing the prospect of having perhaps condominium or apartments like we have down on Ferry Boulevard, near Willow Street. Also, with regard to the tennis courts, okay, those trees that they want to take out were mature trees when I was born. Someone at the last hearing said, oh, it'll take 30 years for those trees to be recouped. That's not the case, okay? And I don't know, and it really concerns me, who decided? Was it the contractor or the town council that said, well, we can put the, take the trees down, put the tennis court over there? Because there's plenty of room to put it next to the other one without taking the trees down. Now, also, I mean, what concerns me about that is I'm an artist, okay? When I go down to New York to buy wood, or if I go to Home Depot to buy a piece of oak, it costs $20 a board foot. That's 1 inch by 12 inches by 12 inches. If you have a 50-foot tree, it has approximately 12,000 board feet in it. Multiply that at $20 a board foot, or forget that. Multiply it at $10 a wholesale cost to take the eight trees down. If the people taking them down get to take the wood away, that comes up to almost $1 million in high-quality lumber. I don't want to see those trees go out. I played there as a little kid. I've played tennis there, and there's no reason that the court could be changed to make it accessible so that the trees don't go out. I came back recently to teach at Stratford High School, and I was kind of flabbergasted. There's that nice, if it's a lacrosse court, but very easily, tennis courts could have been put in there or near where Center School is. So, I've lived here my whole life. I want to see the quality of the life that we have here remain and be enhanced. Thanks.
Next up is Katie Spar... Sparer, excuse me?
Sparer.
Sparer, my apologies, ma'am. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
So, I'm Katie Sparer, and I live at 1705 Elm Street, and I do not like speaking in public. It makes me incredibly nervous, but I had to come, because I am not somebody who puts a great deal of faith in government, listening to the people. I vote, it brings me to tears every time that I'm able to do that, but the reason I came is I saw somewhere, I thought, well, last week I was here, or last time, and in fact, I think there's more people here tonight. And I thought, well, that's a done deal. It's over. And then, I heard through a friend that this was happening again, and it gave me such a sense of hope, especially given what's going on in the world, Ukraine in particular, that you, the people who represent us, are actually listening to our voices, that something we say is making a difference, that it's possible to have your voice heard seriously, taken under consideration, rather than just be there and nothing's ever really done. So that's why I came, and I hope that you will, in fact, listen to all the people that are here and open your minds to how important these things are, how beautiful this town is, and to keep it that way. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Next up is Gerald Gray. Gerald Gray, next.
I'm Gerald Gray of 29 Shoreline Drive. I've presented a packet for all of you, and I am going to read the first page of it, which is a letter to the town of Stratford mayor, Hoedick. I'm sad that she's not here, and the corporation of the town of Stratford. And I am going to digress from the topic that everyone else is talking about, so please bear with me. I am a defendant in the town of Stratford versus Gray property foreclosure action, and my topic is the town of Stratford's taking of our Stratford home, 29 Shoreline Drive. Mayor Hoedick, you and members of the town council may know me from my four-decade position of serving the public in our 1971-created Stratford-located Nature's Way Health Foods, or you may recognize me from my attendance in town council meetings over the past 13 years, during which I submitted much testimony regarding what was being done to my mother, Dolores Gray, and me through the complicit, collaborative, conspiratorial actions of Stratford probate court and corporation of town of Stratford municipal agents, operatives, employees, in particular Kevin Kelly, in the probate court conservatorship racketeering scheme to unlawfully strip my Connecticut-visiting Florida resident domiciliary mother of all her civil rights so as to rob the lifelong multimillion-dollar-valued, self-earned body of assets from her and me while we were in spring 2009, staying in 29 Shoreline Drive. This being the Stratford beachfront cottage my mother had cash purchased some 40 years prior, and for which she had always timely paid all bills, the taxes, the insurance, the utilities, the association fees, et cetera. I cannot begin to convey to you the unspeakable, unconscionable hoarders to which my mother and I have been subjected since 2009, as everything we earned and owned has been rapaciously robbed from us, as the marauding predators have liquidated our properties and businesses, have then pocketed these millions of dollars of our assets for their own self-gain. I have been rendered homeless and ended up in a homeless shelter, in which I was attacked and assaulted and then ejected for having been part of an incident. I have been targeted by police for harassment and terrorization, have been abused by police. I have suffered physical injury as a result, and now am experiencing further physical injury as a direct result and consequence of the horrific abuses to which I have been subjected. I spent every penny I earned over my lifetime, a quarter of a million dollars these past years since spring 2009, trying to save my mother from the unwilling captivity imprisonment in the house of violent mother-beating son Jay Gray, imprisonment to which she was sentenced by the probate court, so that these predators could steal all of her assets as payment for their services of doing this to her. Town of Stratford commenced a municipal foreclosure to take 29 Shoreline Drive. I have fought this property seizure action pro se for all these years, and I am now in the circumstances that were promised to me several years ago. Promises that came with the suggestion that I should just kill myself and then avoid, to avoid the inevitable pain and suffering of being out in the street homeless, penniless, starving, and freezing to death.
Time's up, Ms. Gray.
Can I just finish the last sentence?
We're trying to hold it to the three minutes, because we do have a lot of people, please, so I'd like to ask the next person to come up, if you don't mind.
Okay, I just, I'm saying, I am requesting to you, Mayor Hoedick and municipal corporation of town of Stratford, to withdraw your action of municipal foreclosure of my home, 29 Shoreline Drive.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Next up is Calvin Robertson.
Good evening. My name is Calvin Robertson. I'm at 771 East Broadway. I'm just here to speak in opposition to the building plan that I had seen for the Center School lot. I grew up in town, and, you know, I played baseball there as a kid and played on the playground, played T-ball. I mean, I actually played baseball with my brother. We lived around the corner on Blakeman. Up until my 20s, we would use that space just for, you know, what parks are for. More importantly, though, I have two kids currently now, and that was a playground that we used. My youngest daughter's not old enough to have been there, but my son, we used to take him to that playground. And now there's not any space in this neighborhood to take him to play, so we have to put him in the car, and we drive to different playgrounds in the area. This is, it's town property, right? This is not a piece of private property that... We have a different kind of say in what that property may end up becoming, but this is town property, so I think it's a simple ask that the property should be used for something that benefits town residents. And when I look at the proposal, I really don't see any benefits for anyone, the town, the residents. I don't see any positives at all. So to me, I find it very puzzling that it's even gotten to the point where we would be here making statements about it. I mean, I think we spoke about an earlier proposal a couple of years, a year ago, or I can't even remember now, but this building is even larger and more kind of absurd for the space it is. I mean, there are spaces for that kind of building. It's just not that location. And having this be town property, I think it's not unreasonable at all to say that this property should be used for something that benefits town residents. I know there's been talk about moving these tennis courts. It sounds like a wonderful idea. I would hope there's also room for a playground on it that I can take my kids to, and that other people in the neighborhood, and attract other families, and, you know, it should be something that is a, something that works for us all. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Next up is Pam Robertson.
I'm Pam Robertson. I live at 77 Blakeman Place. Thanks so much for giving us the opportunity to speak. I have lived here for, since my son was two, so 33 years, and we all still call it a town, even though I think, probably statistically, it's a city, but it's a charming, quaint little town. And I really do not support the idea of this huge apartment complex in my neighborhood, because I can't drive down the street anyway. I work in town and have no other route to get to work than that way, but when I have options, I don't drive down East Broadway toward Main Street, because it is literally impassable, and it makes you like a, you know, an outraged driver. So, I am hoping that we can hang on to the quaint little town that we like to think we live in, and I agree that it is, it is town property, and there is plenty of individually-owned property where apartment buildings will, of course, be built. So why is it that we need to give up our land for that purpose? However, I could totally support the tennis courts, because I don't like the idea of taking down the trees either. So it seems like kind of a win-win for the people in that district who do not, or the townspeople like myself, who do not want to lose the trees. Move it down there, and everyone can find an equitable solution. Thank you.
Next up is Nora Christensen. Nora? I have a Nora Christensen here. Did I say it correctly?
My name is Nora Christensen, and I live at 35 Linsley Place here in Stratford, and I'm here about the trees. I want to give you a very short, little science lesson. Leaves intercept and hold small particles on their surfaces, like dust, ash, pollen, and smoke, and they absorb gaseous air pollution. I'm talking about the air quality of Stratford. I've seen so many trees come down. I've lived here 52 years, and trees just go being lopped off here and there. I'll take my walk, and there's another tree, gone. Trees can improve air quality. They help by shading surfaces and reducing temperatures. If buildings are shaded by trees, it reduces the need for conventional air conditioning and the emissions of greenhouse gases that come with it. Plus, lower temperatures decrease risk of harmful pollutants like ground-level ozone that commonly spike on hot days in urban areas. And besides the health of the planet, our own body's health is at stake here, is affected by the loss of trees. Fine particulate matter can easily penetrate into human respiratory systems, causing lung and cardiovascular diseases or exacerbating respiratory illness. It has also been linked to inflammation and heart disease. By one estimate, 8.9 million deaths a year globally could be attributable to exposure to outdoor fine particulate matter. Trees are beautiful. Trees are necessary for life. Do not destroy them for unnecessary reasons. Thank you.
Next up is Ally Falco. Ally?
Thank you for the ability to come here. Thank you, guys, for showing up. This is my first-ever town meeting. My name is Ally. My wife, Brandy, and I are new Stratford residents at 7-Eleven King Street. Part of the reason we chose Stratford as our new home is the natural beauty and great parks that are accessible to residents. We are tennis players and athletes, having also used the batting cage at Longbrook Park, but first and foremost, we are nature lovers. While I appreciate that new trees may be planted when the new tennis courts are built, they will not replace the old, mature, beautiful trees that will be destroyed. I urge you to rethink the placement of the new tennis courts and consider the natural resources that will be destroyed. I ask that you simply look to the tree in the center of the Stratford Town seal as a guide to where town priorities should lie. Please do not cut down the trees in Longbrook Park.
Next up is Tom Yates. Tom? Mr. Yates?
Thomas Yates, 30 Avery Street. I'm not against the tennis courts at Longbrook. I'm against where you want to build them. You know, there's plenty of room along Prim Street to put them back-to-back, 10 to 15 feet in between for sidewalks around the whole perimeter, and the closest they'll be to Glendale is 40 to 45 feet on a skew, on an angle. Now, back at, in 21, the Parks Commission, 3/4 of 21, Mr. Poizan made a motion to go with option one, option one. It was seconded by Mr. Hoedick, and the motion passed unanimously, and it was approved. Now, Mr. Hoedick, excuse me, Mr. Poizan and Mr. O'Brien, I guess, are the only council members that know what option one is. If there were other options, they should have been available to members of this council. And 6/3 of 21, the Parks Commissioner, the Parks Commissioner said some trees will be removed for the new courts. He said some trees. He didn't say eight mature trees, just some trees will be removed. So, I think there's something wrong here, and it should be along Prim Street. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Next up is Lisa Zawatski. Lisa?
Lisa Zawatski, 44 Elliott Street. While I am happy that the current consideration for the Longbrook is to save the Longbrook trees, I still wonder why this was an option in the first place. The town owns a plot of land closer to the high school that is flat and free of trees. Instead of using this for a new park and courts for the tennis team, it will be sold to a developer, to the pleasure of no resident I have encountered. Quite the opposite. There is outcry over the proposal, and rightly so. If the figures I read are correct, we are going to sell the Center School lot to a developer for $9 a square foot and give a tax abatement. What is the point? To move hundreds more people into an already congested area? To put an underground parking garage on a block that has devastating floods? This town has some opportunities ahead to do the right thing. Preserve our historic town center, add a park for those residents, and include tennis courts for the high school team. It's a win-win, as somebody previously said. Not choosing to listen and act on the voices of the town residents, taxpayers, and voters will have an impact on future elections. Stop the rhetoric, blaming the other political party, and attempting to mislead the public and the press. Start to do positive things to make this a better town to live in, not worse. And lastly, yes, I am aware a branch fell this weekend of one of these trees. I hope all of you and the Parks Department understand that one branch does not equate to taking down eight trees. As I've said before, removal of our tree canopy is short-sighted. Take care of our precious resources and stop decimating them. Thank you.
Next up is Kim. Kim Rice. Kim, are you, did you sign up?
Hi, my name is Kimberly Rice, and I'm at 181 Boston Avenue in Stratford, and I want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Hi, my name is Kimberly Rice, and I'm the District of Four councilwoman here to talk about the grave injustice occurring in District Four. On December 2nd, 2021, I won after one of the biggest voter turnouts on the promise to advocate for District Four. I intended to keep my promise in every way possible. I am not the only one who made a promise. Mayor lawyer Laura Hoedick also made a promise, as she told the voters she would do better. She said she would move Stratford forward and that there was only one Stratford. She is not allowing District Four to be represented by their elected official. When I asked why at the last meeting, the mayor gave no legitimate reason. She stated the appointments I made, I have made with careful thought, and I will leave them as they stand. In addition, it was stated that I could attend as a member of the community and still give District Four a voice. This is a disingenuous and very dishonest response. If this were true, they would not still be putting people on committees. Tonight, they will be confirming another appointment. Why, why would they do that if appointments don't matter? I believe that Stratford is smarter than that. Stratford won't stand for any deceit. While I am not sure what makes me any different than the rest of the council, I am disappointed by the lack of diversity, equity, and inclusion from the elected officials. This decision to alienate the fourth district and restrict our voices means that Stratford is not moving forward as was, as was promised, and that she is not keeping her promise. As the mayor, you are governing for all of Stratford, and that includes the fourth district. I ask that you keep your promise and give the fourth district a seat at the table. The decision to marginalize the fourth district should not be about me or how you feel about me personally. As Stratford's leaders, I ask you to keep your word and abide by the U.S. constitutional principles of no taxation without representation, and give the fourth district a voice, a vote, and a seat at the table. Thank you so much.
Next up is Marcia Lee. Marcia?
So in regards to the photo that was taken of the branch that fell in Longbrook Park, I'm actually kind of glad it happened because it's shown a light on two things. One, and this is key, the trees themselves withstood 50 mile-per-hour winds. These are 70-year-old trees that withstood 70 years of weather, and they have the potential to withstand hundreds more because oaks can grow hundreds of years. And on a side note, I hope no one's going out for a walk under any trees during any storm. That would be common sense. Branches are always going to come down. I have a tall tree in my own yard that lost a branch in a storm two summers ago, similar to the one in that photo, and I'm happy to report the tree is still standing and still healthy. No branches have fallen from it since. This brings me to the second point. Yes, some branches should be carefully pruned. Please don't allow a few dead branches as reason for full removal. Not only that, but we should be caretakers for these trees. Every autumn, the tree's own natural food and fertilizer, leaves, are stripped away from the roots. That is how a tree nourishes itself. It's a natural cycle, and I believe I sent links in my email to all of you where it's scientifically explained. We should start mulching these trees with their own leaves, which will strengthen them. I revitalized a sycamore in my own front yard in this very way. We should be implementing more permaculture practices, which is not only low maintenance, it's affordable. Residents need open space. We need natural areas, and mostly, we urge you to start looking at the plans of this town through residents' eyes. We do not want a development on the center school site. There's enough space there for possibly the tennis courts, a playground with a few trees to shade it. Developing that site is trying to fit a square peg into a round hole, problems like flooding, traffic congestion, and overall resentment from the neighborhood. We realize Stratford needs housing, so I suggest opening the door to residents when it comes to the future of Stratford, not just in a yay or nay fashion, but truly asking us what we want, community meetings, asking us for suggestions in real time, and not just questionnaires and emails that can be archived with a click, real face-to-face discussion. This is a plea to spare all of the Longbrook trees, and indeed, a plea for all of Stratford's trees and wooded lots, which are an asset to this town, and to leave center school site to be left open space for the neighborhood. Dense housing is not the answer for the historic district. It doesn't fit figuratively, and it doesn't fit literally. Before I conclude, I saw that there is now another development going up on Holly Lane, which I believe might be a diner. I suppose that very last-- I hope that that is the very last of the natural destruction in that area. That wild area contains vernal pools, a fascinating topic of interest, posted recently on social media by one of your conservation members. I stop along the road there this time of year to hear the peepers sing. It's a once-a-year occurrence, and it's rare in this part of Connecticut. So lastly--
Thank you, Mark. If you could--
Yeah, I'm just finishing the sentence. Stratford needs open space and trees. Thank you so much.
Next is Rachel Rusnak. Rachel?
Hi. Good evening. Rachel Rusnak, 1515 Elm Street. I want to thank the council for making this opportunity available and for your attention to all of us this evening, and thank you to all the residents who came out to speak tonight. Everyone has made such wonderful points on a variety of topics, so I think I'll keep it brief. I'm here to ask you, the leadership that's elected to represent us and serve as stewards of Stratford, to not make any hasty decisions on new development in town. Look closely at the center school proposal and ask yourselves, what does this offer to the residents who already live here in Stratford? Listen to the will of the voters. Do not remove healthy old-growth trees from historic Longbrook Park. A less popular topic tonight, please do not incentivize the development of parking lots and garages, a component of the tax ordinance that's on the table this evening. In the time that I have lived here, I've heard residents here speak out again and again and again on conservation of our precious resources, including green space, thoughtful redevelopment for the town center, and the Shakespeare property, and most recently on Longbrook Park. Please consider the will of the constituents that have elected you to represent us here in the chamber. As you may be aware, a petition launched last Monday regarding the center school project has garnered over 400 signatures to date from residents all across Stratford, in every district. I'm asking you all to think about this as we move forward with the proposal on the center school site. Residents have their own varying reasons for not wanting this development, but what we all agree in is that it is not in the best interest of Stratford's existing residents. I urge you all to consider the implications for all residents when you vote on these various matters and to act in the best interest of Stratford. Thank you.
Thanks, Rach. Next up is Tom Yem. Is Tom Yem here?
Hi. Thomas Yem, 746 Broad Street. I have my Ukrainian flag because I recall that the last time I was here was February 24th, where we had a hearing on the Longbrook tennis courts and the tree issue. That was the same day that Ukraine was invaded, and I think, as all of us know, even if you're not following it as closely as I am, that every day that Ukraine holds out, victory and security becomes more possible. There's a long way to go. At that hearing on February 24th, 100 people were here in the audience, and 30 spoke about the tennis courts and the effort to protect and conserve the threatened trees. We now know that on March 10th, about a week ago, the tree warden requested a review of that earlier decision. So Town Council tonight has a chance for a do-over and a chance to save those trees and make a new decision or to delay the decision so that more can be examined in that case. I also want to point out that on February 23rd, there was a zoning commission meeting at which the Broad Bridge large-scale housing zoning change came up. And I want to mention, remind everyone, that Mayor Hoydic herself intervened, participated in that meeting, and according to the minutes, she cautions against this broad-brush approach. This is not the right thing to do, and I'm quoting from the minutes there. There was also a councilwoman who noted that that proposal does not fit the residential character of the area, which I think also applies to the center school historic district neighborhood. The zoning application pushed that decision off, delayed it for further consideration. Again, more chance to do the right thing. The moratorium on self-storage units also was discussed at that meeting. Now, tonight, March 14th, we are here at Town Council, and one of the other major items on the agenda tonight is an ordinance change, which, as all of you know, but some behind me may not know, is about enabling a tax abatement for a parking garage. This is a terrible idea, and the decision tonight, the ordinance process tonight, would enable a future council meeting to approve the center school proposal. Tonight is the night to delay or defeat that ordinance change and prevent a developer from getting a six-year tax abatement in order to put a parking garage in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yem. Next, I have Tyler Bunch. Did I say it correct, sir?
You did.
Okay, thank you.
Tyler Bunch, 1661 Elm Street. Tonight's just basic commentary on any plans, present or future, to turn anything green to gray here in Stratford. Pretty much anytime you want to replace a natural green space with a parking lot or a building, and the impact to everyone. The town motto for a long time, may still be, to the best of my knowledge, offering more from forest to shore, kind of insinuates communing with nature. I don't think people hear forest to shore and think logging and speedboating. I think it's more about walks in forests and along the shoreline. And every time we take part of that away, this thing that even the town is advertising that it offers differently from other places goes away. Even on the website, "Longbrook Park, the park is a haven for wildlife." That's what it says. Visitors, both wild and human, blah-bity, blah-bity, blah. I don't think the critters are going to play a lot of tennis. I could be wrong. Maybe they'll get into it. But there's a bigger picture to be considered with every one of these decisions that's being made. Every time we're taking a natural green thing, we're taking air out of our own lungs. A couple decades ago, we reached a place as a species where there isn't enough open green space on the planet to create the amount of oxygen necessary for everything walking around on it to breathe. I'm not exaggerating. We rely on water now. We rely on algae and phytoplankton to make up the deficit for what we've taken out off the land. And every drop that goes away is less air for the future folks to breathe. That's just a fact. And think locally, act globally, act globally, think globally, act locally. That's what it is. See, I can't even get it straight. I'm not-- I can't breathe enough. We, as a species, as well as we as individual members of a town, need to be aware that every time we make these decisions, we're affecting the future, period. There's a saying that the original stewards of this land, the colonizers, steal from their grandchildren to feed their children. Well, in this instance, we're stealing from our grandchildren so that our children can play tennis. Thanks.
Next up is Linda Palermo. Linda? Linda, are you here? Is Linda Palermo here? Going once?
Yes.
I didn't see you. I said it a couple times, just want to make sure.
Good evening. Linda Palermo, 46th Lot Place. I have several issues. I'll try to make it short. I need to bring up what occurred when you were not here last month and you had Mr. Poyzon sitting in your position. I feel his behavior was most unprofessional, unethical, and definitely unwarranted when you did your attack on Ms. Rice. She has a right to speak, just like everyone else's. This is America. If you don't want people to speak, then go off the council. You've been there for a while. That was totally unwarranted, and in my opinion, she deserves an apology from you. Now, with regard to the garage, I believe the issue of a garage came up when our mayor was hearkens. And he pushed on this, pushed on this, pushed on this. Why is it you have to have a garage? You want to rake in some serious money? Why don't you put the daycare center someplace in that piece of property so the kids will have someplace to go to and their parents won't have to be concerned about them not having a daycare to go to? I believe there are statutory laws, and I believe that you are all, doesn't matter who you are, you are all obligated to stay within those rules and regulations, just like we are here. The last issue I will bring up, because I think it's somewhat funny, there had been rumors about them, people at Public Works were getting hurt because they were throwing out atomizer cans, I think, and they were blowing up on them. So I called the Department of Public Works, and I said, "What do you propose, or how do you propose people can do, can throw them out?" She says, "Well, do you have a law?" I said, "It doesn't matter. I am asking the proper procedure to throw them out. Is there one in position?" She says, "Well, no, they don't have it in position now, so if you could please hold on to those cans until we get one in position, it would be good." I says, "How long do you think I'm going to hold on to the atomizer cans?" So I believe our Public Works should work on something about getting rid of those cans if they want to stress safety, and also, I would like to know, because I think safety is a factor we must all live by.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Next up is Paula Sweeney.
It's so lovely to have an opportunity to address--
Paula, can you just state your address for the record, ma'am? Your address for the record.
Exactly, yes. 197 Short Beach Road, Paula Sweeney. Not Sweeney, Sweeney. People always make that mistake. It's lovely to have the opportunity to address our town council at these monthly forums. The definition of forum is not given on the Stratford Town website, but I assume that it is, as I described, an opportunity to address the council and our mayor. I'm repeating the message that I spoke of at February's forum and emailed to my own legislative representatives twice, once in January and once again in February, because neither of them was present at the forum last month. I did not get a response to either of my emails, so I will put forth my idea here again today. These forums are a welcome way for us to express ideas and concerns to our elected representatives. Why not include some Q and A if there is time remaining after members of the public have spoken? The public could be invited in the mayor's newsletter to submit questions to a given address, and with a clear understanding that the questions would be answered as time allows at our monthly forums. I remember a while back, I think it was quite a while back, State Senator Kelly and then Representative Hoydic sponsored Q and A sessions at various local diners. It was like coffee and get to communicate with your representatives. The pandemic has prohibited such an activity currently, but Q and A at monthly forums is very possible. There's a time left over, sometimes as much as 40 or 45 minutes. Not tonight, there's very little time left over, but before the council meeting starts. I think this is a simple, very reasonable, easily accomplished idea, and it would go far toward transparency, encouraging public participation, and increasing public inclusion in Stratford's government. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. And being there's no one else signed up, I'm going to close the public forum at 7:47. We'll reconvene at 8:00 p.m. sharp. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. For those of you joining us, welcome. For those of you who are around, thanks for staying. My name's Chris Pia, Town Council Chairman for the town of Stratford. Today is March 14th, 2022. It is 8:01 p.m., and I am calling this evening's meeting to order. The first item is going to be the invocation and pledge of allegiance. I would ask Ms. Sutton from the 7th District to lead us.
Oh, prayer first. Dear Lord, I'd like to take a minute to say a blessing to everybody in this room because we all come together here today with all a common goal of bringing our community together in the betterment of Stratford. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting of February 14th, 2022. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Mr. Poyzon, do I have a second? From Mr. O'Brien, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. Next item is going to be item under 3.1, just for informational purposes only. And next on the agenda is the mayor's report. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Women's History Month is March, and I have issued a proclamation declaring the month of Women's History Month in the town of Stratford, which can be viewed on the town website. This year's theme for Women's History Month is women providing healing and promoting hope. hope. It's a tribute to the ceaseless work of caregivers on the front line and recognizing how women of all cultures have provided healing and hope through history. Winding down operations of offering COVID vaccines for the Health Department are the last in-house clinics will be the afternoons of March sixteenth, the twenty-third, and the twenty-ninth. There are still plenty of options for vaccines through the area pharmacies and pop-up clinics and also through DPH's Griffin's yellow vans. The yellow vans will continue to serve the communities across Connecticut through June of two thousand twenty-two. We've also engaged Stratford V and A to continue to provide homebound vaccines. In other health news, the Health Department is preparing for the reaccreditation and the site visit by providing clarifications to documents submitted in August. They are conducting outreach to neighborhoods where EPA is doing active cleanup. They continue to host Raymar Community Advisory Meetings. The new development that we have at the Army Engine Pl- Army Engine Site with Outfall zero zero eight will be also communicated by the Health Department. They keep the website updated with data and they answer any kind of questions related to the project. The townwide vaccination rates for one dose is seventy-nine percent. For those that are fully vaccinated, seventy-two point seven nine percent. And those who have received a booster are thirty-eight and a half percent. CDC and DPH still defines fully vaccinated as completing their primary series, and you are considered up to date if you have received a booster. Currently, our case rate is one point eight per hundred thousand, signifying that we are in yellow per DPH's townwide COVID response framework. Stratford, along with all of Fairfield County, is now in the green category according to CDC's new community level framework. In factors and hospitalizations, hospitalization capacity in all cases. Over the weekend, I was pleased to transmit the town councils, uh, the administration to the county council, the administration's proposed fiscal year twenty-three budget. The two hundred and fifty-two million dollar budget proposal represents this administration's fifth consecutive budget without a tax increase, and it contained a very slight mill rate reduction. Our grant list has rebounded from last year's COVID stunted growth of one point eight percent to three point eight seven percent, and this translates into roughly one hundred and ninety-seven and a half million dollars. There are some very real challenges this year as we continue to deal with the human and economic fallout of COVID nineteen pandemic. We worked to close a budget hole of four point seven million created when the state failed to deliver the grants to all the communities from the distressed community program, funds that were promised but not delivered by the state. The government, governor's budget this year did not include them either. Also, with inflation skyrocketing, we had to absorb a projected seven and a half percent inflation rate. The budget also includes five point seven million in revenue recovery from the American Rescue Program, which is allowed by the program under law. It funds all major departments as at the requested levels and funds the town workforce at the same level while adjusting for increases in employee benefits per labor contracts. The proposed budget represents a four point two four percent increase on the town operations side and a two and a half percent increase for the Board of Education. Town services represent forty-nine point nine percent of the budget, and education represents fifty percent, with a special assessment for EMS representing point one percent. As the town council begins its deliberations on the budget, I stand ready alongside with staff to assist you in the collaborative process to deliver the best possible budget and product for the people of Stratford. In the economic development area for the Army Engine Plant, regarding the Army Engine Plant, we met with the Army Corps of Engineers and the BRAC office, and were updated about the conveyance of the property from the Army to P S R, which is Point Stratford Renewal, beginning in April and concluding in May. The remediation of Outfall zero zero eight will be completed this fall, and the plan to request inclusion into the fifty-three budget has been proposed. This inclusion in that budget, in the federal budget, would help fund the title flat remediation. On February twenty-third, the Center School Committee made the recommendation for a developer, Spirit Callanagie, to the town council. Aspect Health, which is a company of healthcare hospitality, purchased twenty-nine oh nine Main Street. The Economic and Community Development Commission requested the Stratford Zoning Commission adopt a text amendment to implement a temporary moratorium on self-storage facilities. The town has reached saturation point regarding self-storage facilities and should reevaluate the subject use. Given land value premiums and a finite amount of commercial and industrial zones, along with the difficulty of adaptive reuse, the town should consider how to best regulate uses and to support healthy and vibrant economic environment. The zoning commission approved the text amendment on February twenty-third for a twelve-month moratorium. The Economic and Community Development Department hosted a commercial Realtors Breakfast at Two Roads Brewing, and it was sponsored by Milford Bank, and it was held on Thursday, February twenty-fourth, at eight o'clock A M. A large number of Realtors and businesses gathered. Thank you to the town councillors and staff who attended. The Economic and Community Development Commission on March eighth agreed to fund three noise meters for the police department to support the towns of Stratford's new noise ordinance for live entertainment at commercial establishments. Sterling House will receive one point five million dollars for facility improvements that were obtained by Congresswoman Rosa Delora as part of a federal funding bill. The funds will be used to replace the hundred and thirty-five-year-old roofing, roof tile and gutter system, which is deteriorating areas of the exterior. On Monday, March seventh, we conducted a brief ceremony outside Town Hall to recognize the COVID nineteen Memorial Day and to pay the respects to the hundred and ninety-three, at that point, individuals from Stratford to date who have lost their lives during the COVID pandemic. Special thanks goes to all who came out last Wednesday evening despite the inclement weather to demonstrate Stratford's solidarity with Ukraine in the wake of the Russian President Vladimir Putin's unprovoked invasion. It was wonderful to have with us Lisha Jacoey of Stratford, who reached out to us to plan the event. Pastor Ivan Mazurik from the Holy Protection of Blessed Virgin Mary, Ukraine Catholic Church in Bridgeport, it's a mouthful, and Senia Zetkovich of New York, originally from the Ukraine, who led everyone in singing the Ukrainian National Anthem. The flag of Ukraine is now proudly flying at Town Hall, and Town Hall is also lit up in blue and yellow lights, the colors of the Ukrainian flag. There's online funding initiatives that invites all members of the Stratford community to support the families displaced from the Russian invasion and bombings. Donations will be accepted through April first in the amount of greater than five dollars, and the donations can be made at www.americures.org backslash Stratford Stands with Ukraine. The law firm of Rosenberg, Weewill, and Height have also set up a site to donate medical supplies to Ukraine refugees and families. And you can contribute here if you go to the website of www.rosenbergattorneys.com, and then you'll see the Ukraine call to action. Elder Care Justice Hotline Forum was held at the Baldwin Center. The Baldwin Center was pleased to feature an Elder Care Justice Hotline Forum with State Senator Kevin Kelly and Attorney General William Tong. Connecticut's new Elder Justice Hotline is just a one-stop shop for older adults in Connecticut who need information, aid, and justice. Elder justice issues can range from the age-based discrimination in the workplace to scams, frauds, elder abuse, neglect, and exploitation. If you have been a victim of the scam or know someone, or you've been neglected, exploited, or abused, please call eight six zero eight zero eight five 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 five. The information on the hotline resources and online complaint portal can be found at portalct.gov backslash A G backslash elder hotline. We have some upcoming events. We're pleased to announce the full return of Stratford's, of the town of Stratford's St. Patrick's Day Celebration. Please join me, State Senator Kevin Kelly, and other state and local officials at nine o'clock A M. on the front steps of Town Hall. On March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, our festivities will include the raising of the Irish flag, the naming of the Irish mayor for the day, traditional Irish music and dance performances, and Irish soda bread baking competition. If there is inclement weather, we will move the event inside. The Connecticut Air and Space Museum is celebrating Women's History Month with Rosie the Riveter Month, celebrating women in the workforce on Saturdays and Sundays through the month of March from ten A M. to four P M. You can check connecticutairandspace.org for details. IRS Vida Free Income Tax Preparation is offered virtually at the South End Community Center by appointment through mid-April. The Longbrook Park Commission in coordination with my office is holding their annual spring Longbrook Park Cleanup on April twenty-third at eight A M., and there's, will be assembling on Marcus Drive. Volunteers should bring their own garden tools and gloves and dress to get dirty. For more information, you can reach out to my office at mayor@townofstratford.com or councillor Sheik at ksheik@townofstratford.com. Bulk waste collection begins on April fourth, and is by appointment by calling Public Works two zero three three eight five four zero eight zero between seven A M. and three P M. You can visit the town website to get more information about the restrictions on what can be collected as bulk waste. For staff news, I'd like to, um, have you welcome Molly Ryan, who is our new constituent service coordinator in the mayor's office. Molly is a Stratford resident and a graduate of Fairfield University. And lastly, for my appointment to the Conservation Commission, I am reappointing Laura Dancho as the town council liaison. And that's the report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Questions for the mayor? We'll open up for questions to the council. Who would like to start? Ms. Rice.
Hi. I was, uh, good afternoon, Mayor Hoydic. I was wondering, are there any town funds or ARPA funds for childcare subsidies to help parents pay for care? I'm sorry, there are a few different questions I have. Are there any subsidies going towards transportation to help parents get their children to programs? And are there, is there any funding available to create more childcare programs in Stratford?
Thank you, Councillor Rice, through you, Chair. The ARPA money is decided upon through the parameters that have been set by the federal government. There is some money that the town council can decide to spend on how they should choose to use it. We have awarded, actually, through the COVID pandemic, childcare grants where we have given providers money to keep their businesses open. I can ask Mary Dean from Economic Development, or actually, I will ask Tammy Trojanowski and Karen Doyle to get you that information. There may be still some of that type of grant available, but I'm not sure. The ARPA money is broken up into tranches, some of which the town can use to reimburse itself for expenses, others are set aside by grants, which you will approve when we go through the C I P Capital Program, and then there's others that we get directly from the feds into our, our recovery unit, which is our Stratford Strong, and then, then we disperse that appropriately to businesses, and so the childcare businesses would, would be able to take advantage of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? Mr. Ken.
Thank you, Chris. First question, Mayor, is distressed municipalities. In the, in our due diligence, has the town learned why these funds have not been released by the state?
The funds that were allocated for two distressed municipalities were bond money that are allocated by the bond council through the governor's office and ARPA funds, which, as you know, the governor, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, through you, sorry.
Go ahead.
As you know, the governor has set those grants up and has been giving ARPA grants for the last two years. So the answer to the question is, we, the governor's office needs to release this money. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ken.
Thank you, Chris. ARP allows that lost revenue due to COVID can be replaced with ARPA funds. Do we have a documentation on which revenues the town lost due to COVID?
Is that it? Through, through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, the Finance Director has and the Chief Administrative Office have put this together and will have it ready for you, or they have it ready for you, and we can send it out with the next pony.
Any other questions for the mayor? Ms. Frances.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hoydic. I would like to ask if there's an update on the Alliance Program and were you able to meet with Dr. Ferguson by any chance?
Thank you, Councillor, through the chair. Uh, Dr. Osunde met with Dr. Ferguson today.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor?
Mr. Chairman, or the mayor? The Board of Education budget is just under fifty percent of our total budget. But if you factor in everything that Public Works does, maintenance-wise, grass cutting, snow removal, all the improvements we do on the parking lots and fields and everything else, what would you estimate the actual number is? What percentage?
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Councillor, I, I don't have the exact percentage, but there's a, a report that's due every year called the E D O one form, where the town's resources that are put in to benefit the education system are, are listed. So we will get you that information as well when we send the information about the ARPA grants to, to everybody. Thank you.
Any other questions for mayor, from the council? Actually, Madam Mayor, just one question for you, because a couple people reached out to me over the last week. The, at the Army Engine Plant, that lot across from the windsock, it looks like a lot of staging is being done with cement pillars and a brief road, not road, but dirt path was just put down in the last forty-eight hours. Can you just give everybody an update on that?
Through the chair, which is funny with you. That's the Outfall oh zero zero eight. That was where the, the manufacturing chemical outfall, there went, went two places. Some went right across from the, the windsock, and the other went into the title flats. And so both of those areas need to be remediated. There are heavy metals and PCBs, and so what the Army Corps is, is doing before the conveyance of the property is they are mobilizing to remediate that area right across from the windsock. The, as, as I mentioned in the report, the title flat piece, which is very, quite expensive, and originally, um, the Army, Army Corps of Engineers and BRAC wanted to take, remediate the flats and put it on the property, and then when the buildings were going to be demolished, use that as fill. But the time, the, the money was swept in from Congress. It went to go pay for PFAS, so the Army Corps didn't have the money designated that they, they thought they had from the BRAC closure, and so consequently, that part of the project was postponed.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else from the council? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Town Attorney's Report. Mr. Hodson.
Thank you, Chair. I have a brief report for the month of February. There were two property damage claims that were settled for property damage caused by town vehicles, one in the amount of two thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars and one in the amount of two hundred two dollars. We opened up one new liability claim regarding tree limb damage to a home. We opened up two new property damage claims to town property, one for illegal dumping and one property damage to a police vehicle. There's a new blight file open. We recovered seventeen hundred dollars in blight liens. We have three new F O I requests, and we have a new inland wetlands appeal in Superior Court. And that is my report.
Thank you, Attorney Hodson. Um, next item on the agenda is going to be under ordinances, six point one point one. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
I move that the second reading of Ordinance twenty-two dash oh one be dispensed with as copies thereof have been previously provided to each council member and that the same be adopted as a second reading in the foregoing beat and is hereby approved effective thirty days from passage.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Dancho. Do I have a second? Mr. O'Brien. Discussion on this one?
Chris.
Mr. Ken.
Thank you, Chairman Pia. Discussion I'd like to focus on, the ordinance's new item twelve and new item thirteen. When we met under the ordinance, Attorney Leclerc read from our zoning regulations in regards to the definition of mixed use, and I was just clarifying for tonight that a parking lot or a parking garage is not within the definition of mixed use.
Greg, just so we're clear, are you speaking of number twelve or thirteen? You're specifically speaking of number twelve?
Number twelve.
Okay. Mr. Leclerc.
I think as we discussed, Mr. Chairman, through you, that it would depend on the zone the property is located in, and there's no express prohibition of a parking garage.
And I was just clarifying for tonight that a parking lot or a parking garage is not within the definition of mixed use.
Greg, just so we're clear, are you speaking of number 12 or 13? You're specifically speaking of number 12?
Number 12.
Okay. Mr. Leclerc?
I think as we discussed, Mr. Chairman, through you, that it would depend on the zone the property is located in. There's no express prohibition of a parking garage. It just has to be a mixed use of commercial, retail, as defined. It could be, depending what type of a parking structure it is, whether it would be determined to be mixed use.
So the commercial slash retail plus residential is still the primary definition for mixed use?
That's a common definition, which you commonly see. The most common type of mixed use projects, I believe, would be a commercial residential combination, but there could be other variations of that, certainly.
Thank you. And under number 13, which is related to parking, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, the current language is structured parking use necessary in conjunction with mass transit system.
The only thing I'll correct you on is multi-leveled.
Thank you. So the incentive already allows a tax incentive to be considered, and it's being revised to read structured parking, removing the multi-level, structured parking use necessary in conjunction with municipal use. Do we have a definition of municipal use? To Attorney Leclerc through the chair?
Not in this ordinance, Mr. Chairman, through you. Not in this ordinance.
Greg, I'll give you a little, if you will, I'll give you a little clarity on the background. So the committee's talked about this on and off for a good three years, Ms. Dancho, that you've served with me and then Mr. Perillo before her. But this, this conversation came about, as you just said, this has been in the code. So just so everybody's clear, the fact that it's on this tonight, this is not being added out of the blue like, like, like somebody may tell you. This has been in the code dating back to at least the early 90s, late 80s, when this was probably last revised, Mr. Leclerc. I remember when we had those conversations, almost four and a half years ago. So we felt, the committee, through trial and error, basically just felt that updating this towards a municipal side was the full sole intent. And this conversation came up well in advance of the center school proposals, because those conversations track back in minutes on the council, excuse me, on the committee. So that's where this came from.
Through the chair, just a general question to the council. Has anyone heard feedback from any developer of work in progress that they're reliant upon a 10-year tax abatement?
Not to my knowledge, Greg. Like I say with everybody, Donna in the Tax Assessor's Office and Mary Dean knows this extensively, I believe that, you know, anybody looking to utilize this, any developer, any, anybody looking to utilize this should do their due diligence as a professional and read through it and have their attorneys read through it before they submit something. That's always been my stance for four, four and a half years now, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Sheik?
Thank you. Just for clarification, so with the change in the ordinance, how would this affect the two proposals that we have in front of us for the center school property and the parking garage, or parking, rather?
So as we talked about in ordinances, excuse me, Ms. Sheik, as we talked about in ordinance, this would allow for a municipal parking garage, as long as it has combined municipal use. Okay? So I'm not going to talk to any specific proposal, but this is a general, this can be, this can be used, it's the Town of Stratford ordinance, it can be used anywhere, right? But this allows any part of Stratford to be used if it passes planning and zoning and all the necessary steps to be incorporated in our project. Ms. Rice?
Hi. I have a question for you. Are there any conditions that allow anyone to receive under this change a tax abatement for more than six years?
So, good question, Ms. Rice. So the reason that it was cut down from the previous 10-year schedule to six is that the committee, based off our experience, actually, if you wanted to research this, you more than likely, you more than absolutely could, we have not been giving out longer abatements than six years. The average abatement has been two to three years. We've given out a total of eight abatements since 2016 and issued a ninth, which has not been in effect yet. Those are numbers that I can happily provide to you that were given to me by the tax assessor. So we went with just, again, keeping a pulse as to what's happening, and that was the reason for it. And keep in mind, too, if you look at the schedules of the percentage-wise, we can go up to 100%. It allows the committee and then the council, because the council does have the final vote on this, okay? It allows the flexibility, and that was the whole point in this, to be flexible with a developer of up to 100% for up to six years. So that was the reason I put behind it.
And there are, so there are no, just to be clear, there are no conditions where anyone could get any more than six years?
Mr. Leclerc, I'll refer to you.
Mr. Chairman, Brian Leclerc through you. No, the maximum is six years.
Thank you so, so much for the clarification.
Any other discussion on this item? Nope? Okay. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify. I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Paquette. Good job. We're going to do a roll call vote as it's final passage and second reading of an ordinance. I'm going to give it to Ms. Paquette. We'll start with Ms. Sheik.
Ms. Sheik? Ms. Franceschi? Yes. Ms. Rice? Yes. Mr. Ken?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Chairman Pia?
Chair votes aye.
Motion passes nine zero.
Motion approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is going to be item 6.2.1. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Dancho?
I motion to accept a resolution regarding National Autobahn Society grant for hiring high school students to work in the urban youth stewardship of Great Meadows Marsh on Long Island Sound Program.
I have a motion made by Councilwoman Dancho. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sutton, I heard you first. Do I have a discussion on the item? Mr. Ken?
Thank you, Chairman. In favor of, excited by, the National Autobahn Society, is it Connecticut Autobahn or national that has their presence at the Remington Gun Club?
I'll defer to Madam Mayor or?
It's national, but it's also Connecticut.
Both. Excuse me. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
And thanking the Conservation and Environmental Superintendent, who's sitting over there, it's both, actually.
Any other discussion on the item? Any discussion? Any questions? No? Grant sheet was provided, which is very helpful for everybody. Okay, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is going to be item 7.1. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poisson?
I would like to make a motion to approve items 7.1A and B, as they are both change orders for the West Broad Street reconstruction.
Okay, motion to approve items 7.1A and B by Mr. Poisson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Sutton, I heard. Did she beat you? Any discussion on that?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Dancho?
I have a proposal maybe for the attorney on item A, the $5,425.86. That was incurred by the town on behalf of Frontier. Is it possible to either invoice or have Frontier reimburse the town for the amount?
Mr. Chairman, Brian Leclerc through you.
Go ahead, Mr. Attorney.
We will look into that for it and get reimbursement, seek reimbursement if possible and appropriate.
Does that satisfy your question, Ms. Dancho?
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion on the item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item 7.1C.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7.1C, the award of the contract for the MS4 compliance design to West Cotton Mapes of New Haven in a not-to-exceed amount of $39,600.
Motion been made by Councilwoman Poisson. Do I have a second? Mr. O'Brien? Any discussion on the item? Ms. Ken?
Through the chair, could a member of the Public Works just give some background on what MS4 is and what part of town is impacted?
Ms. Sarah Orr, would you like to?
What you're looking at here for this contract specifically deals with the Bonnell Parking Lot and the Baldwin Center Parking Lot. Those two parking lots are set to be replaced, so this would be an opportunity to look at creating some underground storage at those two locations while we're in the midst of a repaving program.
Thank you very much, both of you. Any other questions, since they're here, on that one? Nope? Okay. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda, 7.2. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poisson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7.2A. This is for the Stratford High Project, Project Adventure PO, in the amount of $51,120.
Motion by Mr. Poisson. Do I have a second?
I have.
Mr. O'Brien? Do I have a discussion on this item, on A? Ms. Ken?
What is Project Adventure?
Ms. Sarah?
I can, I can do it. Project Adventure is a PE class, and this is the rope climbing and the wall and rings and that kind of activity. And it was one of the last things that was put into Stratford High, and the bill's just finally coming through for it.
Any other discussion on the item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is 7.2B. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poisson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7.2B, the CSW Change Order, number one, dated 2/2/2022, in the amount of $33,055 for metering components at Stratford Academy Johnson House to be updated and relocated for the solar panels on the roof.
Motion made by Councilwoman Poisson. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Sheik. Do I have a sec, excuse me, do I have any discussion on the item? No? Ms. Franceschi?
How soon will this project be in place?
Mr. Chairman, Chris Palmer from CSW is here.
Okay. Mr. Palmer, if you can come to the microphone, just state your name and who you work with, You can actually remove that if you want to.
Okay. I think it's good. Chris Palmer, I'm with CSW. We're the owner representative for the Town of Stratford for the solar projects on the school. I couldn't hear the question. Could you just repeat it?
How soon are we looking to replace or start with the project?
So this project is looking to mobilize in about two weeks, and it'll be under construction for a period of about eight weeks. And during the latter half of that construction projects, the metering components will be upgraded.
Three, Mr. Chairman. How will this affect the children that are attending the school? Is there any affecting on the children attending school that, those days for those weeks?
So we have, we've been on-site with the facilities director for the Board of Ed. We've met with the principals and we've met with the head custodians there. So we've laid out the plan. We have areas where we're staging to minimize impact, and we just plan on communicating as best as possible to avoid any disruption. And the, the work that we know would cause the most disruption, we're looking to schedule during the school closure between the 18th and the 22nd of this month, or of April.
Awesome. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other discussion on the item for the gentleman? Nope? Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item 7.3. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Dancho?
I move that item 7.3, that the increase of the golf fees as proposed be and are hereby approved.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilwoman Dancho. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. O'Brien? On the second discussion, I'll just give a, being, I'm on the Shore Beach, so the Shore Beach Commission was looking at this and did an analysis of just surrounding communities and looked at basically, as you can see, it's proposing a $2 per nine-hole round increase per round. If the council remembers, I believe it was a year or two ago that we, I believe it was a year ago, that we increased the out-of-town rates by approximately $2 as well. So this is just keeping up with the areas and we are pretty, pretty inexpensive, actually, as a nine-hole course, even for out-of-town and in-towners, really up and down the shoreline. So that's where this came from. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Dancho?
I'd like to make an amendment to this motion.
You could state the motion, the motion to amend?
I amend that we keep the tournament fees unchanged, so they would remain at $16 and not be raised to $20.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to amend, Ms. Dancho, I have a second by Mr. Poisson. Any discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Was that Ms. Sheik?
Yes. Thank you. Councillor Dancho, or whoever can answer the question, I'm just curious as to why you would want to reduce from 20 to 16.
I can give a lot of details, because I've been involved with tournaments there since the early 2000s. And most of the tournaments there are run by nonprofit organizations in town who give back all the money raised. So the Sheridan Scholarship that I've run since 2004 has paid $7,934 over the last six years. And to, we give, it's all given away in scholarships. The Old Timers, the Stratford Rotary Schools, Breakets, the Baldwin Men, all run tournaments there, all volunteer organizations, and all the money they raise is given away. And I'm afraid if we raise to 20, none of these organizations will go to the orchards, which is our main competition in Milford. And they are currently charging $13.50 per player for tournaments. So I think, I think it's in our best interest and in the best interest of residents to keep it at 16. And also, many of the, the majority of participants in these tournaments are residents and many of them are seniors, so that's the main reason for the change.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion to amend, only? No? Okay. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Okay, motion to amend passes nine zero. Back to the original motion as amended. Any other further discussion? No? Seeing none? We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Seeing none? Motion passes nine zero. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is going to be item 7.4. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Brien?
I move that the favorable recommendation by the Planning Commission subsequent to a CGS 8-24 review.
Okay, motion to approve by councillor O'Brien. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Dancho. Any discussion on this? This came from planning, I believe is unanimous for us to acquire this. We sent for an 824. Seeing no discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item 7.5. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poisson?
I would like to make a motion to authorize Brian Snyder of Snyder Architects to proceed with engineering and design changes and preparation of a new set of construction documents for the Longbrook Park Tennis Court Replacement Project at an alternate location in Longbrook Park.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by councillor Poisson. I have a motion by Councilor Poisson. I have a second by Ms. Dan- uh, excuse me, by Councilor Sheik. Sorry, Kelly. Discussion on the item. So, before we start off, I'd like to ask Ms. Sarah and Ms. Kerrigan just to come up and, um, just bring us up to speed on this, Mr. Snyder's, uh, proposal here for design change.
Um, good evening. Um, so, as many of you are aware, we did, uh, have a public hearing, um, for the removal of, the proposed removal of eight trees for the tennis court project, and as a result of that hearing, uh, we did, um, choose to bring this back to Town Council to look at an alternate location, which I hope that many of you have, um, seen some of those alternates that were provided in the beginning of this project. Um, so, following that, Renee has spoken with, uh, Brian Snyder, who has been managing the project, um, to see if we can move forward on that alternate design. And I'll let Renee get you up to speed there.
So, basically, what, uh, Brian Snyder will be doing is he'll be engaging SLR to come back out and, uh, re- review the geological maps, do some test pits, uh, look at the utilities in the, uh, alternate location, um, see, you know, how much ledge we're looking at and what, uh, what goes into, uh, a new design in that location, what we're looking at as far as construction. Can it be moved? What's that gonna look like? And, um, if we move forward with that design, then they would move forward with new, uh, construction documents and, uh, plans and whatnot, so that's what it is.
Okay, so I'll open it up for discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, question for Ms. Sarah?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Sheik.
Um, first, I wanna say thank you to, to both of you, but especially to Kelly, um, for your ability to truly listen to what so many residents have expressed, whether it's via email or coming here, um, for public comment, and to both of you for sitting through, um, the entire hearing and, and being of the utmost, um, respectful, um, of everyone who is here in support or not in support of the tennis courts in their location. My question is, um, can you ex- explain how this process would evolve? When the plans would then be presented to the Town Council, would it then have to go back to Parks and Rec? Would it then have to go to the Long Brook Park Commission? Or would it just have to be delineated by this body to accept or reject?
So, Madam Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's just coming back to this body because the council's already voted to approve the funding of this, so at the end of the day, I believe it's just coming back to this body for a final sign-off.
Through the chair, Mr. Chairman. Um, I would then just ask as a request that whatever the draft, the draft plan is, the, of the new plan, um, that those plans be forwarded to Parks and Rec and to the Long Brook Park Commission, just so that, um, we are all aware, both bodies are aware of what those plans would include. And then if they have questions, they can come here, they can direct it, or they can go to Mr. Poisson, they can go to Mr. O'Brien, they can come to myself, they can go to Ms. Sutton, um, and we can address them as a collective body.
The plans will be posted when we get them to everybody.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Sarah and Ms. Kerrigan on this? Ms. Sarah, I just have a quick question just regarding, uh, cost. Any of these, are we, are we up against a ticker in terms of time, in terms of this costing more by looking at this? Because we, we voted back in November on this, so I just would like to know if, if it's, if it costs us ten thousand dollars less by moving it, and if you don't have the answer tonight, that's fine, or if it could potentially cost us eighty thousand dollars more. I just don't know.
Right now, we're unsure of the complete cost, whether it's gonna be a positive or a negative. There are some credits. If the construction in the new location does work out, there are potential credits we can receive from the contractor, but there's also the cost of goods, and the contractor has been kinda sitting and waiting all this time for us to kinda get this started. He was ready to start two months ago, so, um, it's hard to say right now. Until the construction design and the test pits come back, we really won't know, um, if it's gonna be more than we expected. So, it's, it's unknown right now, and plus the materials, we just don't know yet.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah. Any que- any, excuse me, any further discussion on this item? Ms. Can?
Short one. Uh, the batting cage that's behind the fieldhouse, potentially that's gonna stay where it is? It's unaffected? Kind of preliminary yes or no?
If, if the, uh, alternate design works out, the batting cage remains where it is located right now.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Thank you both very much, ladies. Um, next item on the agenda is gonna be item seven point six. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
I move to consider and act upon a request for a referral to the Planning Commission for a review pursuant to CGS eight dash twenty-four for Beaver Dam Road Parcels Acquisition.
Uh, motion to approve by Councilman O'Brien. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
The motion is to refer this to the Planning Commission for an eight twenty-four, Mr.-
Thank you, Mr. Town Attorney. I believe he said it, but...
Yeah.
No? Okay. Ms. O'Brien, do you want to just restate the motion, please?
I said, okay, I'll just restate-
Just for the record, Ms. O'Brien.
Motion to, uh, refer and act upon a request for a referral to the Planning Commission for a review pursuant to CGS eight dash twenty-four for Beaver Dam Road Parcels Acquisition.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Do I have a second?
And I'll second.
Ms. Dancho on the second. Uh, any discussion on this?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Rice.
Yes. So, my question is, uh, being, uh, uh, why do we want to purchase the two smaller plots of land near the highway? What is the benefit to the town?
Madam Mayor, should I ask Ms. Kerrigan? Ms. Kerrigan? Ms. Kerrigan's been working on this extensively, so I'll allow her the opportunity.
Good evening again. Um, so, back in two thousand seventeen, the former Conservation Superintendent, uh, applied for a grant, an open space grant through CT Deep to acquire, um, several parcels of land to incorporate them into Roosevelt Forest. So, these are currently wooded parcels, so, um, we'll be preserving trees. I know that's a hot topic right now. Um, and we will be expanding the forest as well and protecting their recreational trails.
Um, just, uh, also wondering, are there any, um, how much of the money is it set aside to, uh, is there any money left to reallocate to other areas in the town for open spaces and areas that could re- really use more, more open spaces?
So, these grant funds specifically are tied to these specific tax parcels, so we can't reallocate these, the funding, um, for this, but there are opportunities for us to apply for funding in the future through this OSWA grant program, so, um, so I, if you have some parcels that you're looking at, I'm, I'm happy to look at that.
Thank you.
Just upcoming funding round.
Thank you so much.
Any discussion on this item? Nope? Thank you, Kelly. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda, uh, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to go into executive session.
This is Laura Dancho. I move to move into-
Ms. Dancho.
-executive session, and those participants should be all Town Council members, Mayor Hoydic, Attorney LeClaire, Mr. Hibans- Attorney Hibansky, um, Attorney Hodgson, sorry, sorry.
And Ms. Dan-
I'm thinking of something else. I'm thinking of something else.
And Ms. Dancho, could you just, Ms. Dancho, can you just, for the record, state the entire seven point seven in for the record? We need that for lead-
Pending litig- uh, move to executive session for pending litigation, Douglas O'Meara versus Town of Stratford. Executive session requested.
Thank you, Ms. Sheik.
And if you could just indicate for the record, those invited would include all members of the council, the mayor, uh, Attorneys LeClaire and Hodgson and Mr. Ing and Mr. Attorney Cotter.
Mr. Downs.
Mr. Downs and Mr. Timniak.
Thank you.
As stated by the-
As stated-
Do I have a second? So, I, do I have a s- hold on, hold on. We have to vote. Hold on, everybody.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Sheik. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We'll be back.
Mr. Chairman, motion to move out of executive session.
I'd like to enter, excuse me, everybody, we're back in session. I'd like to entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved. So, I'll second.
Have a motion made by Councilor Dancho. I have a second from Ms. Sutton. Any discussion?
If you just note that no votes were taken in executive session, Mr. Chairman.
This is to come out of executive session. You need it on that vote or on the motion?
I would just note on the record that there were no votes.
So, there were no votes taken in executive session.
Thank you.
Um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the recommendation of Attorney Thomas Galvin Cotter as discussed in executive session.
Motion by Councilor Dancho. Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Thank you, Mr. Cotter. I have a second by- All right, uh, everybody, next, next item on the agenda, I have seven point nine point one. I'll entertain a motion. I need a motion to, uh, accept.
I'll make the motion.
Motion.
Motion by, uh, Councilman O'Brien. Do I have a second?
Confirm.
I'll second.
A second by Ms. Francesi. Thank you. Any discussion on the item? Nope. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Poisson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Brien. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Motion passes nine zero.